Meeting this evening, Madam Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs. And Mr. Simon.
Here.
And Ms. Wilder.
Here.
And Mr. Foyce.
Here.
All right, would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Please join me in the pledge by Kelly Felkley, City Clerk.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the states, to the republic, and to the public.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed, as well as the approval of minutes of March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appalled. All right, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda is public comments. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please address the mayor.
Hello, everybody. It's my first time speaking at this meeting. I apologize if I'm not doing correctly. With all due respect, I'd like to exercise my rights under the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution. I'm here to talk to you guys about your police force. I'm here to file a complaint about your chief of police right here and how your officers handle people in the streets. There is a man right here, right there in the back with the black shirt on and glasses on. He actually threatened me on camera, and I went to the police, and they told me to call the police department. But unfortunately, there is an innocent man in jail right now. His name is Bo Bish or Flex Your Freedoms on YouTube. It's just despicable, guys. You take somebody that holds a camera, you put him in a jail cell, and then you let the violent sociopaths roam the streets. You know, Bo Bish should not have been in jail. What the officers did on that day was very concerning. It reminded me a lot of the George Floyd incident where they had the guy in the car, they shut the door, and they decided to take him out of the car, and then put him back in the car again. And once that person is in the car and the door is shut, there is no more threat, you know? And just the way that they were just unnecessarily violent with that guy. I mean, you look at the definition of excessive force, and you look at reasonable force, and you look at the way that those individuals were treating that black guy. I mean, I'd film it if I saw that sort of, you know, regardless of race or anything. If I see any type of police violence, I'm going to take my camera and I'm going to film it. And I'm here with a dozen other people that are going to keep filming it. And even when you cops think that you're out, you know, and there's no cameraman, we'll still be filming it. You just won't see us, but we'll still be filming. And we tried to get John Childs to talk with him. He won't talk. He didn't show up today because he's too scared to own up to what he did. John Childs was actually on the jury for Bo Bish's trial. And the whole way that trial was set up, guys, it was bogus, plain and simple. You know, John Childs shouldn't have been on that jury, shouldn't have found Flex guilty, and just the lies, the trickery, and the deception. And I'm not just saying there's a couple bad cops on the street. I'm talking about the corruption comes from the top down, guys. It comes from the chief of police. It comes from the courthouse. It comes from the district's attorney that had the option to not prosecute this case, but still decided to prosecute the case anyway. And I brought this, guys, your attention. You know, that guy back there threatened me. I made a police report to chief of police and the other guy. They're not doing shit about it. You know, if I had taken those exact words and said it to a cop, you know they'd arrest me, beat me up. I'd probably wake up in a hospital. And it's just your police force, guys. It's here to serve and protect people. It is not here to assault, harass, and collect. And if your department wants to continue using violence, it won't be twelve people next time. It'll be twenty-two, thirty-two, or maybe we won't even be able to fit all of them in this room. You guys need to start honoring the United States Constitution and the oath that you all swore to. Thank you for your time today.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
My name is TC, and I'm going to refrain from identifying where I live, but I am here because of what has happened to Flex Your Freedoms, to Bo. I spent a short amount of time in the United States military. I'm a veteran of the United States Army Eighty-Second Airborne Division. I also spent nearly thirteen years in the law enforcement world. So I do not come to this conversation that we're here to have in this brief few minutes from a place of ignorance or from a place of lightheartedness. What I saw take place at the hands, Mr. Mayor, of your of your police, they're your responsibility, sir. Ultimately, your chief answers to you, and I don't know how your governmental structure works, but ultimately, they answer to you, Mr. Mayor, and ultimately, then also to the city council, and above that, to the people and then the Constitution of the United States. Now, I don't know what the individual who was originally being searched and arrested was being investigated for. I don't know what the warrant was for, and it doesn't matter to me. What matters is that you had a citizen who exercised a natural right that's delineated in the Constitution of the United States, exercising his right, was on public property, was pushed into the street, then ordered into his home, who finally said, I've had enough, and he talked back to law enforcement because it's his right, and was then arrested because your officer admitted, my feelings were hurt when you called me a tyrant. You know what that is? When your feelings are hurt when you're called a tyrant? That's tyranny. When you take the power that's been vested in you by the people of the community, and you use that power to subdue, arrest, charge, and then subsequently imprison an individual because your feelings were hurt. We have to do better. I grew up in the state of Iowa, not in Waterloo, but I grew up in the state of Iowa. I used to have a massive amount of respect, and obviously, I was in the career field, massive amount of respect for the law enforcement world. And I'm losing that because they're left to go unchecked. They are. They're left to go unchecked. And that ultimately, Mr. Mayor, is on you, and it's on your safety commission. And you don't have to agree with Bo, am I right? You don't have to agree with Bo. You don't have to like anything that Bo says. You don't have to like how he does it. You don't have to like that he does it cheeky. You don't have to like that he does it with with some sarcasm. You don't even have to like that sometimes he says some really nasty things. Because the natural rights of man, they're granted to all of us in this room, excuse me, I'm sorry, that are granted to all of us in this room, whether you believe in our Creator or not, the natural rights of man say you can say what you want, especially to public servants, and they don't get to use their power against you. Mr. Mayor, you can change this. You can make this better. You can make this go away, if you will.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, too.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Keith, and I think it's paramount that everybody understand that if you're going to continue with this budgeting system based upon the people in your community that you depend upon to receive those very monies, then you need to start listening to the people in the beginning. My specific issue is I want a meeting with the mayor, a private meeting. I called about six months ago to the ladies down in the office, and they assured me that somebody would get back to me, and I would have that private meeting so we could discuss the details specifically to myself as they relate to the rest of this community. I'm not who you think I am. I'm not a resident, and I'm not a United States citizen. I'm a man that was born, just like everybody else, a living soul. And when we start placating that a budget is more important than the living souls that support it, that becomes an egregious act against humanity. Can I set up that appointment with you tonight, sir? All I need is, as a member of this community, a private meeting to meet with you that has been negated for six months.
You can call my office in the morning. We can work from there.
My name is Keith. I hope you will pass that along to whoever's taking that call, that I'm not playing games. We are slowly becoming, in modern America, Hitler's willing executioners for nothing more than a dollar. I'm sorry if that hurts anybody, but that's the reality I see, and I think everybody else needs to start taking a look at that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is LC Smith. I live at four sixteen Oliver Street in Waterloo. I've been living there since nineteen seventy-two, and that'd be fifty-two years. My concern is, I want to know, is our street is on the list to be repaired. After being there fifty-two years, just the worst I haven't seen it. And the three hundred block of Oliver Street, it's a, there's a speed bump. I don't know why. Why did they put a speed bump there? You know, and in the wintertime, the snowplow comes by, doesn't clean the street real good. They had a manhole bust like two years ago, and they hadn't fixed that yet. It's still messed up from the two hundred block all the way to the four hundred block, need to be repaired. So can somebody, you know, tell me, is we on the list for that street to be repaired or what?
We can't tell you right now, but I have the Public Works Director here, and I know somebody that knows you, and we'll get in contact if I don't have your phone number. So we'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'm Michael Blackwell. Next month, it'll be a year since I joined Reverend Stummey in making comments before this city council to address the massive racial disparities regarding the major components of a quality of life index. In a variety of ways, I have spent a number of decades as an adult seeking to address and redress these inequities individually and organizationally in a few major urban areas in this country, including Waterloo. These unjust disparities exist in housing, income, jobs, community life, education, environment, civic engagement, health care, life satisfaction, safety, criminal justice, and work-life balance. A couple of council meetings ago, a staff person earnestly suggested that each department and vision project should have an accountable and responsible leader who would update the city leaders and the community on the progress of their work. I wholeheartedly agree with that expressed sentiment. As a matter of fact, I would suggest that each component of the quality of life index has such a responsible and accountable person to update the city and the community on how the disparities are being addressed and mitigated. Now, I know the issues have been so entrenched in the Cedar Valley for over a hundred years, so much so that the severity of the injustices is easily overlooked, for quite frankly, institutional discrimination and personal bigotry have been and continue to be lock-stitched into the fabric of our metro area. Now, as time moves on and increasingly complicates the already labyrinthine matrix of racist policies and practices, the harder it becomes to apply our abilities to break their intricacies and multiple and cumulative effects. Those who are aware of and affected by the many consecutive generations of deliberate oppression are able to sing with Michael Jackson when he had a video from the Rio de Janeiro slum. All we want to say is that they don't really care about us. I lament to say that, but sometimes, very starkly, it seems to be the case. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll be invoking my Fourth Amendment rights also. First of all, I'd like to explain that I do have a brain injury. It's hard for me to write, read my notes, and frankly, go out in public or get in front of public, but after seeing the video that I saw online, I had to come up here. There was so many acts in that whole situation that were against, there were so many rights violated, I can't even describe to you. I took care of veterans for ten years, and if you know anybody that was a combat veteran with PTSD, you don't touch them. You don't unilaterally touch them. I watched an officer walk up to this guy and shove him into the street. Just think about that for a minute. All this guy was doing was his free speech. There was other people that were closer to the scene, but this guy had a camera and was talking. The first off, the other officer went and solicited, I can't think of the crime now, disorderly, and then he went and asked all the people in the area if they were offended by the guy's language. You can't do that. You can't, police officers can't solicit a crime. And everybody obviously said, no, we weren't offended, so they couldn't get him on that, so they got him with interference. Well, one of your counselors was on the jury for this trial, and he actually said that it would be hard for him to go against the police because he has to deal with them, and he still served. He could have excused himself, so maybe he has an agenda. Also, three-quarters of the people in the jury knew officers from the area and said they were friends with them. The judge, he was also a tyrant. I won't get into that because you can't do anything about them. The council member, John Childs, that's who that was. I just think to throw a combat veteran in a cage for a right that he might not have been fighting in this country, but he swore an oath to that constitution, and I guarantee you, this guy takes it serious. That's why we're here. It's too bad that these guys don't. And I, you know, these two might be the best guys in the world, but as soon as they see other police officers violating somebody's rights, they need to step in. It's not a brotherhood then, and that's what they have. And that's why there's such a disconnect between the people and the police, and they could fix this. I mean, it is damaged horribly, but now it's us versus them. I didn't grow up that way, but when I saw somebody that I appreciate and I take care of get their rights violated like that, and now he's over there in a fucking cage because a cop got his feelings hurt, and that's exactly what it was, and that's what he said. So where does this stop? Where does it stop? What can you say on the sidewalk before somebody comes up and puts you in handcuffs and throws you in a cage? You know, he was saying some not-so-nice things like this guy said, and frankly, can I just finish this one sentence, please?
Yeah.
The guy that filmed the George Floyd incident, they were all yelling. None of them got arrested. He got an award, okay?
Thank you, sir.
I see an issue with what's going on here.
All right, thank you.
My name is Larry Stummey. I live at one zero zero eight Lowes Lane. Dr. Blackwell and myself come to you as pastors, citizens of Waterloo Cedar Falls, with special concerns for the poor and vulnerable in our community. In particular, we have addressed the dilapidated and dangerous vacant homes and buildings, long neglected, resulting in economic loss and personal danger to the affected neighbors. We come to you and all elected officials in our community to correct the neglect of your duty to serve and protect. In that mission, we ask you to respond to us, but more important, to those who suffer the consequences of this neglect. With that motivation, we ask of you, of you who adopted the twenty twenty-one, the Waterloo twenty thirty community vision that you adopted, I believe in twenty-one, which is a detailed plan of the community's future developed at Waterloo expense by a consultant, De Nova, we ask today, have you hired, as the plan sets out, an executive director at a pay of between ninety and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to oversee this ambitious plan? If not, why not? It is spelled out in that plan, and required that he or she should be in place by April twenty-two. Could you respond to whether you have appointed that or the role of the executive of this program?
Where's, where'd you get that from? Where's the plan at where it says that in there?
I've got it right here.
I'll wait till you finish your comments. I don't want to interrupt your comments, sir, so.
It shows right here. This is the plan, especially the alleviate eight. It says the executive director consultant at fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand per year, and then it says the director consultant should be in place on April twenty twenty-two. This is from this plan.
No, sir. I don't. But not at this moment. I need to take a look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because it is such an ambitious plan, it needs somebody to be full-time, really on this all the time in order to get something done. It has to be pushed by somebody in charge of it all.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? Would you please come up to the podium, address the mayor, please?
Good evening. I will also be reserving my right for my identity under the Fourth Amendment. I saw the video that has been referred to tonight, and I wasn't surprised, but I'm still disappointed every time I see it, even though I'm not surprised. I'm not a very good public speaker, but I think I'll be spending quite a bit of time in town. And I'll put you on notice that one of my pet peeves is law enforcement officers not wearing their seat belts. And I'll be doing a lot of filming on that, and I'm assuming that this town is self-insured for workers' compensation, and that is the thing that injures the most police officers, is motor vehicle accidents and not being belted in during them. So I'm going to film a lot of that, and just a lot of everything else, as much as I possibly can. And I will resist unlawful arrests with the necessary force, up to and including lethal force. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else?
Good evening. I had a whole speech right now, but that was contingent on John Childs being here, so I kind of just have to cover a few things. These guys behind me, they've said pretty much everything, except I could add maybe a few things. Just give me a second here, since I'm not going off the speech anymore. They said all about John Childs. One thing I could add is shortly after the trial, John was escorted out of the police department to his vehicle, as I think a couple of people here were filming in the parking lot, and they noticed he had expired registration stickers, which, whatever, you know, and we didn't even know that was him. And he was escorted out by a police officer, and it was kind of, you know, he got done saying that, you know, he holds police officers to a higher standard, and that couldn't be more of a lie after what happened in the trial. And I get that the judge didn't allow the jury to know some things, and there were some questions they had for the judge that weren't allowed to be asked, so just despicable, though. Another thing, on April eleventh, Flex Your Freedoms and I were filming outside of a bank on a public sidewalk, and Officer Brant, I'm sure you know who he is, he witnessed Flex Your Freedoms be assaulted and did absolutely nothing. So I get that if an assault happens out of their presence, you can't do anything, you know, file a report, but when he watched it happen, still didn't do anything? Just despicable. Oh, the other thing, the whole George Floyd thing, it was the same incident. What happened if that guy would have died from being tased, had a heart attack? He wouldn't be in jail. He'd be a hero right now for filming it. The guys that filmed the George Floyd thing, they got a journalism award for it. They were six feet away. He was at least thirty, at least thirty, and not on the property. I watched the guy that got arrested, his father came and was face-to-face with the officer. They pushed him back as well. No family members were charged. Nobody else was charged that were a lot closer. They were in the scene, were never charged. So it was all about avoiding a lawsuit. If you can convict him, then, you know, then he can't sue. That's what it was about. But I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you guys making eye contact and listening to everybody. If you go around and watch other city council meetings, a lot of them, when they know they're wrong, they just put their head down. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there anyone else going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with the.
Thank you.
I'm not good at this, so I have a few issues with the police department. So one is they're refusing to take my police report. That makes it a criminal act by the ADA.gov, and I'm flying to Washington DC in May, and I prefer to not have to. That said, also, they're doing things like, because I talk about the substance of the police report I want to talk, give them, like they'll trespass me from everywhere. And like the trespass laws are, you know, if you do something wrong, you can't come back, but the cops are making it so the individual vendor is not allowed to let me come back. So like Quickstar invited me back in, and trespass law states that if any employee invites you back into their store, that all trespass orders are null and void, but they ignore that. And then when they arrest me after that, that's a Fourth Amendment right violation because there's no probable cause or warrant at that point, but they still detain me. And I don't really want to get into all of it because it's so disgusting. I need, Officer Frean would not, I called Officer Frean from Express Care out there on San Martin. A security guard kicked me out, even though I go there twice, three times a month. And when we're on the edge of the property, that security guard maced me. He would not call the cops. I went to Quickstar and called the cops. Officer Frean took me to jail and would not investigate what that security guard did to me. And then the last thing is now, just in the last two days, because I told Frean I was going to have him, I personally said to him, I'm going to file this affidavit myself and have it notarized, and you're going to have to go to court. And all the places I go to around here, I can't go in anymore. They all said I'm banned. I didn't do anything to anyone. And, you know, it does upset me, but I've been through so much in the last seven years, it ain't going to break me now. And the last thing I would like to say is, the superintendent of a building is not allowed to tell their tenants that a person cannot be in the building. I just dealt with this a couple of days ago, and I dealt with it a couple of years ago at Green Hill Point Apartments. If I didn't do anything in their building to be trespassed, just because the superintendent doesn't like me in that building doesn't mean I can't go there. That's called the tenant's right to enjoyment and privacy. And today, Frean showed up over here at the president and told me I couldn't go in, even though Holstead, I believe is his name, he knew, and he was familiar with it before. He knows that if the tenant wants me there, I can be there, but he just said if I go back there, I'm going to jail. So that's about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Will I be able to contact you about this stuff?
Huh?
What will, is there anything going to change about the things I just complained about?
I mean, I'm not a police. I mean, I'm not a police officer at this point. I can discuss it with the chief to see what's taking place, but I can't make a decision on criminal matters. Potential. So you had your, I respected you and had your time. I responded.
Yes, sir.
So if we could, please conduct a meeting, but for someone, for someone that says they're not a public speaker, you did a really good job expressing yourself. So thank you.
All right. Motion to close public comments.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Bill's Payment 1A1 for March twenty-fifth in the amount of four million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, ninety dollars and thirteen cents. And for April first, in the amount of one million, five hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take one, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six complaint mowing with complaints no removal.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on snow removal? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form a contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions on this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and instruct the city clerk to read the bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Our engineer's estimate was sixty-five thousand dollars. Alternate A vacant lots, price per occurrence, alternate, so it'll be alternate B. There's no estimates in there, so I won't read those, the rest of those estimates. Our first bidder was from P&amp;J Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for alternate A was one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Alternate B, one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Alternate C, sixty-five dollars. Alternate D, a hundred and ten dollars. Second and final bidder was Adams Outdoor Contracting Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for alternate A was two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Alternate B, two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. C, two thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, ninety-six cents. And alternate D, one hundred and forty-five dollars, seventy-five cents.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving ward of bid to P&amp;J Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa. Option A, seventeen hundred dollars. Option B, seventeen hundred dollars per occurrence. Option C, sixty-five dollars per man hour. And option D, one hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents per man hour, approving contracts, bonds and certificates of insurance with conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six. Complaint mowing with complaints no removal contracts and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second with the correction.
How it's listed in the resolution is the correct dollar amount.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Keep her moving.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Can someone take one through three, please?
Mr. Mayor?
We were good. Yeah, he read it.
Yeah, we're good.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Envision of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars in conjunction with the public market renovations project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number two, a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement with River Plaza Investments LLC for renovation of existing commercial building into no less than fifty-six residential units with a five thousand dollar in-hill housing incentive per unit, having a minimum assessed value of six million, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars with rebates at fifty percent for ten years located at ten, ten West Forest Street in downtown Tiff District and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number three, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with HR Green in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars to perform professional consulting services as a qualified environmental professional to assist with the management and implementation of CERCLA Section 104K cleanup grant from Environmental Protection Agency pertaining to environmental cleanup of former Rath buildings at fourteen forty-two Sycamore Street and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions? And where's Noel at? The goddesses, so we need to. All right. Yes, sir.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Number one, didn't we just do something with the public market not too long ago? I think we built that building, or not built it, but we remodeled it completely because I was working for an employer at that time when we sold a bunch of equipment to the city. So what now needs to be done to that building to make it habitable, I guess, or whatever? And number three, a cleanup grant. We just, I thought we just agreed to sell that or agreeing to sell that to someone for a dollar. Wouldn't that be their responsibility, not ours? We keep getting our money into their pocket. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, number one, what needs to be done?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. For number one, we are looking at some HVAC improvements. Some of the previous tenants had noted some concerns in there with heating and cooling, especially in the harsher months. So we're looking at some improvements to that system. Obviously, we want to get a new tenant in there. So these are some of the things in our responsibility to get that moving ahead. For number three, there is a development agreement on for the Rath Administration Building to be developed under the consent, I believe. This is the buildings across the street from that that we bought from Crystal. The city was a recipient of a six hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred dollar grant from the EPA. This is the consulting fee on that. This is the EPA estimated amount for the percentage of breakout of consultant versus actual asbestos removal and all that. So we're moving ahead with that contract.
Thank you. Mr. Delveaux?
Forrest Delveaux, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. I would like to speak to number two on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
The proposed agreement, development agreement there. I see that we're going to be giving tax incentives. We are also going to be giving the five thousand dollars per door for those fifty-two. And this is in the downtown Tiff. I want to know if these residential housing units are going to be in the Tiff or if they're going to be paying their taxes to the general fund like the rest of us that build a home. I think we've got to stop giving away to save the city. Are we going to be giving this Tiff incentive as well as all of the other incentives? That's a question.
Thank you, Mr. Delveaux. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. This is located in the downtown Tiff as we have for other downtown riverfront housing. This will stay in the Tiff as part of the overall Tiff. The current value of the project out there right now is one point nine million. They pay about forty-eight thousand dollars in property taxes. Any of the rebates will be above that amount, so that'll be the base value. So going up to that six point seven three million, that's a four point eight one million dollar increase. They'll still be paying another forty thousand dollars in additional taxes, even with the Tiff rebates in place for the first ten years.
All right. Thank you.
After ten years, the Tiff runs out?
All right. This isn't debate back and forth.
It's not an answer either.
I was going to say, if you have one more question, you can do it, but you yielded your time. Do you have one more question or not, Mr. Delveaux?
Yes, sir.
Then let's, let's, let's be, let's be sociable. Let's be pleasant.
After ten years, will they be paying taxes into the general fund? Or will it be in the twenty-year Tiff or forever Tiff?
Downtown Waterloo is a blighted Tiff district, so there is no definite sunset date at this time.
So potentially in ten years, it'll be paying into the downtown Tiff?
It'll be paying into downtown Tiff for sure.
Okay. That's what he's asking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Right. Counsel questions?
Mr. Mayor, a quick question. It's not really a question. It's more of a statement that on number two, and I'm, and I'm the, one of the council liaisons for planning and zoning and I brought this up a number of times, but I think we need to really reconsider parking requirements in the C three downtown district. You look at the River Plaza at fifty-six units. You look at the Courier Building at sixty-nine units. If Sixcom goes to fruition, seventy units. So we're looking at two hundred units, roughly two hundred units within a block. So I would like that, to see planning and zoning to address this again because I really think that we need to look at that. And I'm not talking about the one or two or three units like you see above a commercial storefront. I'm talking about when we have multifamily dwellings of fifty, sixty, seventy units. I think we've got, we'd be remiss if we didn't deal with trying to find and require some sort of parking.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Could someone take four, five and six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving amendment to the development agreement with Waterloo Development Corporation, originally executed September fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Amending the anticipated budget from two million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars to three million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars in Section Six. And the grant maximum amount from two million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars to two million, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number five is a resolution approving amendment to the development agreement with FDP WTC LLC, originally executed January eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, to change the assessed value to eight million dollars for give interest payments during the pandemic and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number six is a resolution approving the real property charitable donation agreement with FDP WTC LLC for approximately two point two five acres within the tech work campus and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions on these items or counsel?
I had mine answered this morning, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Seven, eight, nine, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the cost share grant contract with the Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship for the Water Quality Initiative Program Grants Amount of four hundred thousand dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Sunnyside Creek Improvements Wet Detention Pond and Channel Stabilization Project. Contract number ten sixty-two and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement, number one, with the ECOM of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four Martin Luther King Junior Drive Wetland A Restoration Project Contract Number one one zero nine authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And nine is a resolution approving a professional services agreement amendment, number one, with HR Green in the amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand dollars in conjunction with fiscal year twenty-twenty-one Charlotte's Road Reconstruction Hess Road to Highway two eighteen Project Contract Ten Twenty, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Has been made with the second. Any questions on these three items, seven, eight, nine, from anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Is number seven, is that, there's a lot of residents that had water issues in their basements that I found out. Does this address that problem? Do we know? Can you just clarify for me or give me an idea if that's something that was addressed with this? Or is this a totally different subject than, than that?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. I assume you're talking over around the Olympic area? This is totally separate from that. This is to help with all the drainage that comes from Audubon under Highway twenty, past San Martin, down through Forest Street and all the way out.
All the way down to sixty-three?
Yep.
That neighborhood right in between sixty-three, that's where I had the most complaints?
Yep. This will eventually help limit the runoff. Well, it will hold the runoff longer and allow it to go out at a much more even pace for downstream so that our storm sewers and all the conveyances downstream can handle the flows that are coming that way. Once we have this project finished, then we'll continue to look at other projects downstream. But if we can hold more water up, up above at the top end and then let it out slowly, we don't have to build as many large ponds or make other improvements in drainage ways or things like that downstream. So it's, it will help in the long term, but it will not necessarily help with basement flooding in that regard. This is more for overland flooding and things like that.
And what's the, what's the, the estimated time that that will be done that we can look forward to addressing those concerns? This will take how long in your estimation to?
Right now, we're in discussions with the property owners to purchase the property that we need between San Martin and Highway twenty. Once we get that property in hand, we are ready to move ahead towards construction, but it, it could be anywhere from a month to six months. We're just not sure, depending upon property acquisitions.
And is it possible for the two of you, and I don't know if you're included too, to get Mr. Simon together to just talk about the area, stormwater, all those things that we've done over the course of time to try to help alleviate some challenges in those areas?
Let me know some times that we can sit and talk. Yep.
Because it's been a process and so, good question.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
And I had conversations with Mr. Knutson also, and I read this entire grant and I want to, I really want to thank him and his staff because it was an extremely well-written grant. And it's long overdue.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you take number ten, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the resolution approving the supplemental agreement. Number one, within Trust Solutions Group Magellan of Denver, Colorado, in conjunction with fiscal year twenty-twenty-three construction of fiber to premise feeder distribution and backbone network project contract number ten eighty-eight and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document to our next meeting, please.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oops. That was supposed to be a. Okay. Eleven, twelve and thirteen, someone?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir. I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a supplemental agreement, number nine, to professional service agreement with Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, originally executed on October tenth, two thousand and sixteen in an amount not to exceed nine thousand dollars in conjunction with the FY two thousand and seventeen Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement Over Saint Creek Project. Contract number nine twenty-two and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number twelve, adopting a resolution approving sourceable contract number zero two zero two two one dash SAM with SAM Sarah Software for San, of San Francisco, California, in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars for the first year and payments thereafter of thirteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents annually for a thirty-six month term in conjunction with the fleet tracking software for Public Works Department and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number thirteen is adopting a resolution approving a distribution preliminary, preliminary official statement for five million, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in general obligation capital loan notes, Series twenty-twenty-four B, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar taxable general obligation capital loan notes, Series twenty-twenty-four C, and twenty thousand, or twenty million general obligation capital improvement notes. That was a big miss. Twenty million capital improvement loan notes, Series twenty-twenty-four D, dollar amounts subject to change.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Number twelve, does this, is this going to include all of the city vehicles? Because at one time it was GPS on some of them and then it got taken away by a previous mayor. So are we going to start knowing where our vehicles are and know what they are doing and et cetera?
All right. Thank you. And we had a work session, I think, a little while ago, so Randy, could you give us a quick?
Yep. Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So what this is actually going to be doing is replacing the current software that we're currently using, Precise. And what we have AVL is on the street equipment. It's on some engineering equipment along with code enforcement. Um and what we have A V L is on the street equipment. It's on some engineering equipment along with code enforcement.
What's the, what's the purpose of, what's the purpose really?
So what we're actually using it for is, um it started with our snow and ice control. Um that way we can monitor to see our application rates for our salt and uh brine, pre-wetting, you know, all the other, um different aspects for that, to be able to quantify that, so we can look for a fu- future uh purchasing and also be more environmentally friendly. Um but the one nice thing with this newer software, it actually has a component where it um ties into the O B two sensor. So while it's gonna be saving us a little bit of money, we can also do engine diagnostics. So uh give an example, if the guys are out plowing snow and they start to have a mechanical issue, um they'll, the, the garage would be able to just pull it up, look at it live, see what the issue is, if it's something that they need to um come back to the garage right, right away, or if they're good to continue to use it, um they would be able to do that. Where in comparison now, if we have a check engine light, they kind of have to stop and um see what we're doing, so.
Smart, smart city approach.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, fourteen and fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution accepting a professional service, services proposal from Advanced Environmental Testing and Abatement, Inc. in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred ninety dollars for asbestos removal in the northeast section of the library and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Number fifteen, a resolution approving a supplemental agreement number one to a professional services agreement originally executed March twentieth, twenty twenty-three with A E Com Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars in conjunction with conceptual design and visual renderings of proposed improvements at Riverfront Stadium Stadium and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these two items? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder? Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number one in ordinances?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive file considering passed for the first time ordinance amending the city of Waterloo code of ordinances by repealing subsection five A two, payment of fees of chapter seven rental housing title nine building regulations and amending subsection six A two of chapter seven rental housing title nine building regulations.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh we had part of a discussion about this. Uh Kelly had mentioned some timing things that need to be immediately taken care of. But in regards to the other portion of the work session we had about uh rental fees, I think Kelly's going to be reaching out to a council member or two and bringing the team together, so we can have further discussions. So I wanted to make sure that Councilman Creighton Smith knew that that was forthcoming. But here, uh a timing issue for us to get this moving forward. All right. Co- counsel? Uh Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rolls.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Uh Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Like, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive ca- file considering passed for the second at third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, it's, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an order assessing civil penalty to the Snack Shack for thirty-three forty.
Uh he needs to, what do we need to do on that one? Open the hearing.
Sorry. I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to open the hearing for the assessing the civil penalty to the Snack Shack for thirty, forty-three thirty-five Texas Street, Waterloo, Iowa, five zero seven zero two for the sale of tobacco to minor violation first offense.
Second.
All right, that motion has, motion has been made with two seconds. Mr., Mr. um counselor? Oh, uh, the motion to open the hearing, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is now open. Mr. Counselor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh Martin Peterson, Legal Department. Honored about the sixteenth day of February twenty twenty-four, the Waterloo Police Department did um an enforcement